Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Shrewsbury Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for November 20th. We're going to start out with some housekeeping items. First item is to review and sign bills. First item is to approve a payment to the community advocate for the November 20th, 2024 legal notices for $445.50. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve that bill.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Next up is a bill to WB Mason for office supplies for $54.12. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve that bill.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you. Onto our public hearing. I'm going to take it a little bit out of order this evening, and our first 6:30 will be for 12 Sadler Ave. If you could step forward, please.
Can you perform this?
Yes, please. So our first hearing is to hear the appeal of Lloyd Brown, 36 East Street, Franklin, Mass. for variance to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 7, Table 2, to construct an enclosed front porch 10.8 feet from the front yard setback where 30 feet is required upon property located at 12 Sadler Ave. in the Residence B2 District. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 32, Plot 157000. If you could state your name for the record.
Lloyd Brown.
Good evening, Mr. Brown. So we are at a four-member board this evening, and one of our board members would have to recuse himself because he isn't a butter, which would take us to a three-member board. And we feel badly about that. So what we've agreed to do is to hold a special Zoom meeting on December 16th.
That's so nice.
At 6:30, so we'll hear your appeal. So we apologize for the inconvenience.
That's okay.
Okay?
No apologies.
Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Could I just submit some paperwork on it?
Sure.
Is it okay?
Yeah.
You can take your work, do you?
I mean, I didn't think so.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We'll see you in December.
Okay. That was quick.
That was quick. Our next hearing is to hear the appeal of Jason St. Pierre, 21 Grafton Street, Shrewsbury, for variance to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 7, 6, Table 1, to convert a single-family dwelling with an in-law to a two-family dwelling upon property located at 34 Elmer Circle in the Residence B1 zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 21, Plot 206000. And I understand there's a request to withdraw?
Yeah, on 34 Elmer Circle.
Correct. Okay, so we're going to withdraw that, move on to our next hearing.
Vote and sign. So I'm just gonna vote.
Oh, yes. Can I get motion to withdraw?
I move to approve the withdrawal for the appeal of Jason St. Pierre, 21 Grafton Street, Shrewsbury, Mass. for the variance to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 6, Table 1, to convert a single-family dwelling with an in-law unit to a two-family dwelling upon property located at 34 Elmer Circle in the Residence B1 zoning district. The subject premises is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 21, Plot 206000.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you. All right, next hearing. This is to hear the appeal of Jason St. Pierre, 21 Grafton Street, Shrewsbury, Mass. for two special permits to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 4B, and to Section 6, Table 1, to construct an in-law apartment and extend a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling on property located at 4 Marion Ave. in the Residence B1 zoning district. Subject premise is described on the Assessor's Tax Plate 16, Plot 088000. If you could state your name for the record, please.
Good evening. I'm Jason St. Pierre. I'm attorney at Shrewsbury.
I'm Samantha Valirotti, the owner.
Give us a look at what you're looking to do.
Yeah, so Representative Samantha Valirotti and her parents, James and Linda Dia Domenico, they recently purchased a property back in May. Her parents currently live in North Conlight and are looking to relocate to live with her and her son. We are proposing a 1,048 square foot in-law addition to this property. Basically, currently, there's an existing detached garage and carport, so we'll be removing those, adding a two-car garage. One would service the existing property at 4 Marion, the other one, obviously, the in-law. Above the garage will be a bonus room connected to 4 Marion, and that's how the properties will connect to each other through the doorway and hallway to the upstairs of the in-law As you can see on the plot plan, what we're proposing is basically the addition within current zoning guidelines, but for the slightly the front of it, which would still be within the current pre-existing structure on 4 Marion. Along with that, also proposing is the porch on 4 Marion to extend the non-conformity slightly on that end. Aesthetically, when we put the new driveway in to access that porch, it's going to be through the stairs to the right as opposed to walking on the front of the property. We feel that the plants itself came out really nice, and as far as serves a purpose for the existing property at 4 Marion, where they now have a garage as opposed to the detached garage and carport along with a bonus room for her child, obviously, with the parents now being able to try to live with her as well. Aesthetically, we feel the plants came out really nice, are in line with the neighborhood, so from a special permit standpoint, we don't feel like there's going to be any more attachment out of the neighborhood. But then, like I said, I'll open it up for any questions.
Thank you. Louise, any further information we should have?
No. I think we, the building inspector had one question, but that was resolved in answer ago. The connection, just making sure that the in-law walked through, you know, conditioned space through the bonus room into the main house, which was answered, and so there are no other questions.
Okay, great. Let's run this through the board. Ann, any comments, questions?
So just one or two about the physical aspect. So the entry to the proposed addition, you would drive into the garage, where are the stairs again through the bonus room? I guess I'm having a hard time.
From the existing dwelling?
Yes.
So they're gonna, so when the garage will actually, so to access 4 Marion will be, there's a covered walkway, they're proposing the back of that, and then to access the both properties would be through the bonus room above 4 Marion. So above the existing garage, it'll attach to 4 Marion, maybe a bonus room, maybe actually two bonus rooms, one for the in-law, one for 4 Marion through that bonus room and the in-law, or for the 4 Marion with access to the hallway to the in-law apartment.
Okay. And so bonus room is above some proposed garages?
Yes.
Okay, so you'd go up a flight of stairs. Okay.
Yeah. And both properties would have that. The in-law would be one that would align with that bonus room.
That's all I have for now.
Dave?
Ann, I already addressed the questions about the entry, and the building inspector talked about the action being a conditioned space. You have, you know, pre-existing non-conformity of, I see, 19.2, and the 26.1 is less than that, so those are all just facts. I don't really have any questions or comments yet.
Kevin?
Go ahead. No, go ahead. You're sure? Okay. No, I don't have any questions either. I do like that there is the covered walk in back, given, I've moved to over a month, you wouldn't have to go all the way upstairs, but it's nice to have it in the winter, which is great. As for the non-conformities, I don't mind them so much facing the street. Glad to see there's no non-conformity against the neighbors, so I don't have any issues.
Okay. I don't have any questions either that haven't been already asked. It's a public meeting. Is there anyone wishing to be heard on this matter? Right. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. I'd get the motion, please.
And the only thing I wanted to note, too, was just, there's a handful of waivers that were requested, but the nature of them, I don't, location utility lines, you know, and connections, drainage calculations, things like that, so.
Should we take a separate vote on the waivers?
Sure.
Okay. Yep. So I move to approve the appeal of Jason St. Pierre, 21 Grafton Street, Shrewsbury, Massachusetts, for two special permits to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 4B and Section 6, Table 1, to construct an in-law apartment and extend a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling on property located at 4 Marion Ave. in the Residence B1 zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 16, Plot 088000.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
And I move to approve the waivers as requested in the application.
Second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you. Next hearing is to hear the appeal of Richard Ricker, 11 Maple Avenue, Shrewsbury, Mass. for a variance to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 6, 7, excuse me, Table 2, to build a house 32 feet from the side yard setback where 30 feet is required on a property located at 42 Hill Street in the Rural A zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 18, Plot 001001. Can you please state your name for the record?
Thank you, Chair and members of the board. Respectfully, my name is Richard Ricker, and I'm an attorney with law offices at 11 Maple Avenue, and I'm here representing the appellant, Raj Kakkar, who is the managing member of Modest Nest LLC. Just as a clarification before I start, if you don't mind, this is a request where the sideline setback requirement is 30 feet, the request is to go to 23 feet. I think, I think I might have read wrong in the announcement that you just did, so just to correct that for the record. This is a, as you can see, a triangular-shaped lot. It is an approved lot, which was signed off by engineering as it is a lot that was developed as a result of a larger lot that was split into two. Signed off by the town engineer and recorded as a subdivision plan. The lot is, as I stated, it's clearly an odd-shaped lot because it's triangular in nature, as you can see from the plan, and it, originally, the house was knocked down, the one that was on there originally, and then the house next door was built, and then this house was planned. The initial plans for this house, when they went to conservation, it was requested, and when they went to DEP, it was requested that they push the house back towards the sideline setback. The initial plans that were filed were for the 30-foot setback. There was still no work in the wetlands, there was still no work in the water shed or the wetlands or otherwise, but it was preferable, obviously, to push it back because of the wetlands, which impacted this lot, as you can see from the lot, from the platinum. I would suggest to you respectfully that that is a classic hardship. It's topographic in nature, but also, this matter is also addressed by the size and shape of the lot. So we have two prongs of hardship here, the size and shape of the lot, as well as the impact of the topographical wetlands and soils of this particular parcel. Now, it is also important to note that in all other respects, these plans conform to all the regulations that were in place at the time that it was filed. It was, it met all the regulations, except that there was a policy, an unpublished policy, but a policy of the Conservation Commission, which basically asked that houses and developments be 30 feet back from the wetlands. That's what we've done after dealing with the conservation and the DEP. Typically, in a situation like this, we have seen historically in this town, we've seen many of these lots where buildings were allowed closer to the 30-foot policy of the board because they were still within the regulations, the conservation and the wetlands regulations of the town. Since then, that policy has been formalized in a regulation in this town. So this was filed before that, and that, so for the purposes of this plan, it was policy, the plans went to DEP. We do have a couple of emails from Conservation and from DEP, which in, if I can characterize them, support this proposal. The email from Conservation Agent merely says, "Caring for the resource areas of Shrewsbury and doing as much as possible to protect them hardly seems to be an excessive request." That was from our Conservation Agent. And then from DEP, one of their suggestions when they reviewed this overall situation, one of their suggestions was that we seek a zoning variance for the subdivided lot setbacks between the two proposed houses. And they had some other requirements, all of which we can meet because we can address all of the soil conditions there as the house is situated. So the bottom line is that this is a movement of the house at, frankly, the behest of Conservation and DEP to move it to better address the wetlands that are on this parcel. As you can see, the wetlands do impact it to a pretty decent extent, and I think that in terms of doing what is necessary in order to improve that situation, the request is therefore not, I would suggest to you respectfully, unreasonable. This is the only lot there in that area that is impacted in this particular way, so this is incidental to this particular lot. It is still a request to use this parcel to have a single-family residence, and that's what this would be, is a single-family residential home. And I would respectfully suggest to you the fourth prong of a variance request being there is no nuisance caused by this request, there is no noise hazard or other type of nuisance that would be generated as a result of this house being built as requested. If anything, the request is in keeping with trying to do something better than what typically would be allowed and typically has in the past been allowed many times by both our Conservation Commission and DEP. In this particular case, Conservation, because of their policy, denied it. We went to DEP, and this is why we're here, because they asked us to come back and do the request for the variance. The waiver that we've asked, the waivers that we asked for on the applications, we've satisfied all of those except for the stonewall detention, the drainage request, which we would still request that waiver, because as you know, anybody that moves forward for any development of any sort needs to deal with the stonewall regs in order to, and file for a stonewall permit, and this would be addressed at that time, should you seek that to allow this variance. With that, I think I've hit all the points. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to try and answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann, you want to start?
Sure. So can you talk a little bit about, since the house hasn't been built yet, why it couldn't be built to conform with the zoning bylaw?
I think that's a good question, and I think we've struggled with that a little bit, but in keeping with the other houses in that neighborhood that have been built as it come down High Street and that particular area of High Street, this house, the one that you see on this plan, footprint, is really quite modest compared to everything around it. And I think if you either narrow the house up or anything like that, you're looking at substantial change from the houses that are around it, and therefore not necessarily in keeping with the rest of the neighborhood as it's developing and as it's developed. So respectfully, we suggest that it would be better to keep it as modest as it is compared to the ones around it. This is smaller than all of the houses that have been developed around it. And I would suggest to you that it's just more in keeping with what is there in terms of the neighborhood. That being said, it's also better for the sale purposes, for the use purposes, for a family to use, to have more room in their living room or whatever, so it would be a much more comfortable house, frankly, if it were allowed to be built as it's suggested.
Is there anything else?
Huh. Is this a test?
No, I'm just, you know, I drive down this road twice a day, and there are much smaller houses, and I think the small house was demolished to create these lots.
Further down, yeah, absolutely. I think there are clearly smaller houses as you go further down, but the development of houses has certainly been different. It's been larger, and this is smaller than what has been decreed down that road, there's no doubt in my mind. I went back yesterday just to make sure I was correct in that suggestion. And again, I think that we need to bear in mind, we haven't been turned down by DEP on the superseding order of condition. We have not been turned down. They asked us to come back and do this, and obviously, that would be the thing that we would have to do, is to go back to DEP, say, "We did what you asked us to do," and we think this is a better house, frankly, all around, for all the reasons that I've stated. I wish there were more.
That's all I have for now.
Dave?
So I'll just start out with, I struggle with the request for relief, but let me get into some questions. So Modest Nest LLC purchased this entire lot, demolished the property.
Correct.
And then divided it into two lots.
Correct.
Yeah. So it, reasonable to expect, it could have been anticipated where the setbacks were going to be when the lot line was drawn?
Well, I think that that's reasonable to expect, and I think that, as I said, the first go-around had the house closer to the wetlands than it is, and that was, frankly, when it was a policy that had been overlooked many times by our Conservation Commission in the past. So I don't think it's unusual that they could have assumed that it would have been okay to put the house there. It's certainly not an unbuildable lot, and I think that as the policy changed with the Conservation Commission, that's why this became an issue. I mean, and his whole development here was really during that timeframe. So you're looking at a situation where, in the past, this would have been fine. It would have been fine if the house was closer to the wetland. It would have been something that the Conservation would have stated that they didn't necessarily like, but they would have okayed it, and I've seen many instances where they had okayed it. There, again, there's no, there's no work in the resource areas or even close to the resource areas, so that, again, is another issue. There's no work at all in the resource area here. And as I said, in the past, this has not been an issue, and DEP has, in those cases where it was suggested to be an issue, DEP has routinely in the past issued superseding orders and conditions.
When you say superseding orders and conditions, is that to override the Conservation Commission and allow it to be built closer to the wetland?
Yes.
So, okay. So it sounds like Conservation Commission, they did their job.
Yes.
And told you what they needed to tell you, and now you're here before us, and it's our job to evaluate the request for relief.
Correct.
So it just is, it's difficult for me when an appellant acquires a parcel of land and then divides it with, you know, with the ability to know where the setback lines are, to then build two new structures with one being an immediate non-conformity.
I get it. I get it. I think, however, I think it's important to understand also, again, that I don't think they looked at it at that time that it was going to be an immediate non-conformity, that would be a problem. I think as they got further into the process, that was when they were starting to get the pushback and started to get the suggestion that, you know, push the house back, and we'd like to maintain, now we want to maintain that. We're no longer giving the relief that we've given in the past, so now you have to deal with it.
So, and so there is, are you saying, before we go back to the Conservation, there is no option to move it back in, because it looks like it was designed to fit within the setback, but then it was moved, you know, laterally across the frontage to accommodate the Conservation Commission? So if the board saw fit to decline your request for variance, is it an option to move it back towards the wetland?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes, absolutely, it is. Yes.
Just in my own homework for this, you know, I happen to live near an interesting property, 44 Everett Ave., which is a-
Skinny house.
This very skinny house, the 10-foot wide house. So I did do some, I looked at that one, and-
What do they call it, the Rocket House or something like that?
I don't know.
The Rocket House.
Yeah.
Okay.
I can see why now.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I looked at that, and the cases are somewhat, if not very similar, so.
Well, that's much more drastic because of the rip, don't forget, that has Kingsbrook running under it, and that's a riverfront issue more than a wetlands issue.
Okay, fair. It is also, though, a entity that acquired a parcel of land and divided it to build two homes in a neighborhood. And to go to Ann's point, or and your point about, you know, the styling theme of the neighborhood, you commented that it would be a smaller, more modest house than the rest of the neighborhood. It just leads me to further question the desire to subdivide the property and then build two homes on it, if the nature of the neighborhood is more spacious homes.
I think, though, that it's important to understand that you don't do all the engineering, and you don't get all the engineering done and get everything completed for your setbacks and everything else before you buy a lot like this. You generally determine whether or not you've got enough frontage, enough space, generally, to build a couple of houses. So I think in all fairness to the applicant, you know, I don't think that he finessed it to the degree that is necessary to determine whether or not the Conservation Commission, having changed its policy, would have basically forced the question at this stage, at that stage. I think it's clear that you've got two lots here. It's clear that the subdivision is a permissible subdivision. It's, and it's also clear that, yes, you could build a house here, I mean, without a doubt. I think what we want to do is build a house in keeping with what's around it and in the neighborhood, and I don't think he should be expected to have known the finesse of it when he actually did the first purchase. They don't, they don't do typically the engineering before they, before you buy a lot, that you look at and say, "Yeah, I could subdivide it. It's got the right frontage, it's got the right area, you know, I could subdivide it." It's got the right frontage, it's got the right area, you know, I could subdivide it into two lots." I mean, I haven't seen anybody do the engineering, frankly, ahead of time like that. Maybe some people do, but.
Okay. That's all I have for now.
Kevin?
My only question is, can you speak more to what this patio is listed on the plan? Or shown on, let's see, plot plan?
Are you talking about the patio on the new house?
Yeah, on the new house, that sits inside of the 23-foot setback you're proposing.
Yeah, we basically flipped the patio on the Conservation Board request from the other side, just to stay away from the wetland, from people doing anything in the future with the wetland doing more extension of the patio or anything, so we moved it to the side of the house.
Okay. I mean, it looks like there is, I don't know the layout of the house on the interior, kind of wish I did, but it looks like there's plenty of room to that 30-foot buffer to fit the patio on that side.
There is, but as he says, the Conservation Commission asked them to put the patio on the other side.
Okay. I don't see why they would do that, given it's outside of the 30-foot buffer.
That's my point. They wanted to keep as much away from the resource area as they could. And I think that is the overriding theme of this, is that they wanted to keep the development as much away from the wetlands as was reasonably possible. And as I said, and the email from the Conservation Agent bears that out, they didn't think it was much of a stretch to, as long as you put that patio on the other side and push the thing back. They didn't think it was that much of a stretch to ask for variance, so.
Okay. All right, that's my only question. I do a couple questions for the board once we get to that section.
Yep. Do you have the comments from the Conservation Agent? Are those something that you can share with us? So, to be clear, if we were to deny this, you would still have a path forward?
We would go back to the DEP, Tom. We tried for a variance, and if you said no, we would say we get denied. And then we would move forward, asking them for superseding order of conditions. Based on the original plan.
It's not an uncomplicated plot plan. There is a lot going on here.
There is. There is.
Wait for public comment.
Can I approach?
Please.
I highlighted the comment from her. And then the DEP has, I think, two pages in. I think I appropriate the character.
So the hardship that you're suggesting is size and shape?
And the impact of the wetland, yes. But size and shape is as much a hardship as anything.
Right. All right. Before we open to comments, anything else before we? All right. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter? If you could approach, we're in a different meeting area than we typically are, so maybe if you stand right there, and if you could state your name for the record, and then we'll give you some time to give us your thoughts.
I'm Cynthia Bushy. I live at 14 High Street and have a Christmas tree farm with my family on 20 High Street that is down the road. I'm quite frankly deeply troubled by this. We attended the Conservation Committee meeting that was held under the wire of the date that that policy was being voted on as a regulation. And at that time, it was presented as the intent to build two homes. The one that is now currently under construction, there were not specific plans presented. There were plans for this one presented, and the lot had not yet been approved to be divided into two lots at that time. So to suggest that it was unknown is not accurate. So as this was going through the Conservation Commission process, it was also going through the subdivision process. And at the town, my understanding when I went down to speak to them was that different offices handle different things, and these processes are different. And as I was there, trying to seek clarification on why there would be approval for a lot that meets the measurements and road frontage, but that also had wetlands, would be approved, I heard that in that moment, it had just been approved that day. So the fact that somebody would not understand exactly the order in which they were doing things to get them approved is, seems quite dishonest to me. And there was nothing to be done, and we were there when the request was made for the patio to be moved to the other side, with the understanding that someone who buys that home and has a patio on the side probably would want to put up a swing set, or whatever they would want to do to live their life in their home, further encroaching on the wetland area. That was the reason for the request. Multiple times in that Conservation Commission meeting, a request was made to have a single car garage rather than a double, or even a car and a half. And in that meeting, another resident of the town stated that the LLC is creating their own hardship. So that was discussed in the meeting. This is not new information. Everybody understood that. Additionally, and I know it's not being addressed this evening, where that water goes is of deep concern to the residents that live downhill from that site. When I raised it at that meeting, I was told, "Oh, it's not being directed down the hill, it's being directed into the woods," sort of like perpendicular to the road, "not down the hill." Water travels down the hill. And we have a business down the hill where we're growing. It's an agricultural business, and so we do feel impacts of construction that happens at elevations higher than where we're located. It's troubling to me, the process doesn't, like, we can just not talk about how we're going to divert water until after we get an approval, or until after we get an appeal approved? The system is troubling to me. And I have no question in my mind that when this land was purchased and the plan to subdivide it, that it was known. And it's, I have many questions, and now that they built the second house and created their hardship. But the first one they proposed was the one on the corner, the triangle lot. And then they built the other one to create the hardship. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So anybody else that would like to be heard on this matter? All right.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
Just regarding stormwater, I know you mentioned it in your prior, so a stormwater permit is needed?
Yes.
And so a management plan has been created?
It's in the process of being created now. The, as you know, the requirements for conservation are that any development such as this cannot cause more water to come off of the lot than it already does.
Correct.
So in most cases, that means that there's less water coming off after the development of a structure like this. I would, if I could, address a couple of those issues. One is that the lot was subdivided before they went to Conservation, they had to be. And water diversion does have to be addressed. It always has to be addressed, all as part of these processes, so. I, you know, I'm glad she brought out the issue of the patio and why it's over there. I guess I forgot the swing set, but, yeah, they really wanted to have activity on the other side of the house.
Yeah.
So.
I have one question.
Yes.
Do you have the plans that showed the garage that Ms. Bushy was talking about?
I didn't see the garage.
I think she was, she mentioned, maybe it was supposed to be one car, now it's a two-car, I just wondered.
I don't, I do not. I wasn't involved at the time with the Conservation Commission.
Okay. But we also don't have plans for this house?
There was never a plan with them.
Is there, then, is there any plan now?
So there's any, there's never a plan of a one-car garage.
Okay, but is there a plan for the house to be built now? We have the plot plan, but is there anything more detailed?
We have a plan for the house, it's not here, for the, to be built there, with the two-car garage.
Okay. Do you have architectural drawings? Have you gotten to that stage, or it's just sketched out, or where are you on that?
We have a sketch, yeah, we have a sketch.
Anybody else before we close the public hearing? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Move to close the public hearing.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All moved. All right. So where do we stand?
I'm not sure I'm okay with Conservation kind of pushing into our territory and saying it's going to be okay, or to go before zoning and get your approval later. I don't know how the interactions between the town boards, which I don't think really experienced this quite in the last couple of years, or at least as long as I've been a member. But I would push back on their requirement for where the building's situated and the patio. I'd prefer to see a compromise between the two instead of one side getting what they request and us having to deal with that just because we're later in the process.
I think that horse has left the barn, wouldn't you say? I don't know that, really, we could do much about that.
No.
Unless we continue the hearing and try to get some coordination between Conservation and zoning, although I'm not sure we're going to change the trajectory of where we're heading.
I think it's fair for Conservation to say that their thing is more important because they're Conservation, but I don't think it's necessarily always going to be true that if they say, "Well, you go to the other boards and figure it out there," you know, "the wetlands are more important than the zoning," well then, you know, zoning or planning or any other board is, I think, fair to say, "Well, our thing is more important."
Right.
And so, just to address Kevin's point.
Yeah. Yeah, we have a lot of cooks in the kitchen on this one.
I haven't had a chance to view the Conservation Commission hearing on this property, but I do think that as a board, we're capable of independently making a determination regardless of what transpired there, based on the application that's been made to us.
I agree.
And the public comments.
All right. Well, I think we're ready to vote.
Okay, I want to just say a few more things for the record.
Please.
So I do not find that the variance criteria have been met. I don't find that there are soil conditions, shape or topography of the land or structure or otherwise. I don't find that the literal enforcement of the zoning bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise. And I don't find that a variance, I do find that if a variance were granted, there would be a substantial detriment to the public good. The fact that the house has not been, that there's no plan for the house indicates that the plans could be redrawn to create a house that does comply with the zoning bylaw. And for those reasons, I don't believe that we should grant this appeal.
I'd also like to add, the bylaws state under district intent, the rural A district is intended to, is intended as a residential district for typical rural uses with which one-family homes are compatible. And so I think that with that definition in mind, you know, it's really, it's very tough for me to get there.
Right, and I do agree the rural A aspect of it, along with a lot of other things that have already been stated, that's the way I'm feeling as well. Kevin?
I don't have anything else to add, but I'm in agreement.
Okay. So can I get a motion to deny?
I'd make a motion that we withdraw.
You want to withdraw?
Yeah.
Okay. So can I get a motion to accept a withdrawal?
I move to accept the withdrawal of the petition.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Our next hearing is to hear the appeal of Bach Antran of 57 Rosemont Ave, Waltham, for variance to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 6, Table 2, for addition, that is 44.6 feet from the front yard setback, where 50 feet is required upon property located at 19 Appaloosa Drive in the rural B zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessors Tax Plate 43, Plot 011011. Statement in for the record, please.
Antran. And, yeah, I'm the general contractor for the project. So currently, there is an existing deck that is on the backside of the house where we want to build the sunroom. Right now, the deck frame, basically, it's sagging, so instead of trying to fix the deck, they barely use the deck, want to build something that actually the family can enjoy and use. Does not change the footprint of the house, the deck is still, the sunroom will be exactly where the deck is, and it doesn't draw any, you know, nuisance to the public or create any inconvenience to the public, because it's actually on the backside, really, nothing around it. Yeah, I mean, pretty straightforward project, yeah, nothing else to it, just a sunroom on top of an existing deck.
Okay, thank you. Ann, or Louise, anything else to add? Ann, questions, comments?
I don't have any concerns. It looks nice.
Yep.
I don't have any questions.
Okay. David?
As you said, it's, you know, the exact same footprint as the deck before it. Yeah, no other comments?
No, looks great. I have nothing to add.
I'm fine with it as well. So this is a public hearing, so is there anyone that, given that we have an empty room at this point, I don't think there's anyone here to state, so can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve the appeal of Bach Antran, 57 Rosemont Ave, Waltham, Mass., for variance to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 7, Table 2, for an addition, that is 44 and 6 tenths feet from the front yard setback.
that is 44 and 6 tenths feet from the front yard setback, where 50 feet is required upon the property located at 19 Appaloosa Drive in the rural B zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 43, plot 011011.
Can I get a second, please?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. So we're at the end of our agenda. We have just a couple items to review under new business. So there's been some discussion internally regarding the time of our, the meeting time of our typical meetings, which start at 6:30, which always, in my mind, makes me feel like I want to be here at 6 o'clock. So I am suggesting that we consider a reframing of our timing of our meetings and move it to 6:00 PM. Looking for some commentary on whether that would affect anybody's schedules, or if they foresee any issues with a change, any other considerations that we should have regarding this.
I don't have a problem with it. I wonder what Peter thinks.
Yeah, Peter.
Yeah, and our new associate member, John Mack. Right, I haven't had contact with that person, so I don't know if we want to-
We could table it until we run it through at our meeting, which we could do in December.
Right.
After talking with them. But you guys are good with this?
Yeah, I don't really foresee an issue. My schedule's widely flexible. It might actually be better, because then I might have a better opportunity to get home before-
You might get home with the babies.
Before my two-year-old gets into bed.
There we go.
So.
Well, I do think sometimes if we have long meetings, it can run much later into, you know, times it. And we also have members of our town hall who are here all day into the night, so we appreciate that, but if we can make it a little bit sooner, that might help you. So, okay, well, we'll kind of table that conversation until we can get the consensus from the board. But at this point in time, I am looking for a motion-
One more thing. I did sneak it into the agenda for five staff report. I did not prepare a staff report tonight, but going forward, I think just to, like, have better communication with this board as well, just, you know, so you have, you know, an idea of what's going on in the planning department, what we're doing, and that might be relevant to you all. Sorry to delay. That's okay, going forward.
Absolutely.
We might prepare that.
Does that mean we'll be having visitors to give those reports, or is this all through you?
Mostly me, I think.
Okay.
Yep.
That's great.
I love it.
I think that's wonderful.
Great.
Great. Okay. Well, if there's no other conversation, can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
I move to adjourn.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.